I'm thankful for a very technically savvy mayor, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. So the first item on the agenda is the proposed final plat for O Sage Hills replat of lots 122, 123, 124, and 127 to lots 122R and 124R.
That'd be 127R, wouldn't it?
I'll tell you here in a moment.
Yep.
Did we, yes, that is 127R, my apology. Got that wrong on the, on the notes. So, um, so the applicant is asking to take four lots into two lots. This is in the O Sage area where it's hillside, difficult to develop. Lot 122R is planned to be fronted to Sagamore Court. And lot 127R is scheduled to be fronted to Eagle Cove. The applicant is also asking for an access easement across lot 127R for access to 122R in the rear mainly because of the hillside grade of trying to get accessory things to the, to the property, which I believe the applicant is here present who can describe that in more detail. The staff has reviewed all, reviewed the plat, and bear with me one second. We were running all the way up to the last minute today trying to get everything planned out, so just bear with me. All right, checklist has been provided. Staff comments include layers from utility companies needed for abandonment of the existing easements that need to be removed. Public Works has, has provided letters to staff stating that they're, they have nothing in the easements and are okay with the abandonments. And the applicant has provided a necessary map showing that there are no utilities in any of these easements. But again, will need verification from all utility companies prior to filing of the final plat that they're in acceptance of the abandonment. And then source of title and certificate of ownership should be updated prior to filing the plat to show accurate ownership for the replatted lots. Currently, there's multiple owners on this. The applicant has it under contract contingent upon approval of the final plat, at which time he'll close, and then update the certificate of ownership and file if approved. That concludes my comments. Staff recommendation is approval upon meeting all staff and planning commissioner requirements. Do I have any commissioner questions?
I have a question, Vice Chair. Is your intent, Scott, I'm getting go out there and look at this property, I know the terrain is pretty steep, do you want to limit access? I saw that you added, and you mentioned in the subcommittee meeting, this permanent natural landscape buffer. Is it your intent to prevent, of course, we have applicant here, and I know they're in Bill's house, but maybe may not sell it one day. So do you want to limit access to that, meaning that they'll always take access off Eagle Cove rather than Sagamore Court?
Yes, sir. Being a double frontage lot, we only allow for access from the front, so we've placed a permanent landscaping easement of 25 feet on the rear, which is on the Sagamore Court side to prevent any ingress or egress.
So that, in a permanent landscape buffer, I don't think that's defined in our cove, then there was no, there is no, there's not any need for additional, not to provide access from that, that side of the lot?
They're, they're going to have sufficient access from Eagle Cove for where the house is going to be planned.
Look at note 10.
Thank you.
At the top left.
Thank you. That's suspicious. The, the only other question I have, it's a little unclear about the, I see the five foot, which is a utility drainage easement, then it bumps out to a 10, and then 15, is that all the way around? Which will be on the west side, north southwest side of 122R. So we have five foot, and then it goes out to, is that 10 foot the drainage and utility easement, so it bumps? So we have 10 foot around partial, part of the lot, and then five foot around the other part? I don't think we have issue with that, is that what the intent is for the applicant?
Well, the applicant's representative is here who could probably speak better to the, to the easements.
State your name and address.
Mark Rutter with Holloway Engineering. Yes, that was the intent. It's well within the setbacks, so it really doesn't matter much.
No, I just, then you want to make it back down to five, okay. Let's, why don't you, let's denote that on that west side, if you would, Mark Force, please.
Sure.
It's clear that that's what your intent is, that to be the drainage and utility easement, where it steps out. That's all I got.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the final plat for O Sage Hills replat lots 122, 123, 124, and 127 to lots 122R and 127R. Subject two.
I'm sorry.
Okay. I have a motion, and I have a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And that stays with Planning Commission?
That is correct.
Item two.
Mr. Vice Chair, item two is a request to amend the Maumell Master Land Use Plan for property located at 1601 Club Manor Drive from institutional to commercial. So this property is located on the Club Manor side in our town center area. The, it was originally an out parcel from the final plat of Carnahan Village, which is a single-family development to the west. The commissioners were provided a zoning and land use analysis. This was actually worked on, we were working on it all through this week, so it came in a little late. You'll find the, the existing zoning is PCD. The location, again, in the northwest corner of Club Manor Drive and Carnahan Court. It's a cleared site, undeveloped, and slopes down towards Club Manor. The surrounding land uses are commercial and special use residential, and the surrounding zoning is C2 and PCD and PRD. As far as the property, again, it's been zoned PCD since at least 2000. There has been no change in its, in its land use. And I'll just kind of read the analysis to you since it did come in late, just so that you're aware of the staff's comments. The proposed rezoning of the property does fit the comprehensive plan, which shows for town center, commercial uses. The applicant has indicated their intent is to build multifamily townhomes after rezoning to C2 utilizing the R3 by right allowance in the C2 zone, which allows for between 16 units, 34 units per acre multifamily residential. This would further lower the remaining limited commercially developed land within the city town center. If the property is developed as residential, there would be a limited increase in property tax collection and city services. If it uses commercial, PCD offers a greater array of options for commercial uses, although C2 does offer the option for mixture of commercial and residential, which is not an option with PCD. Concerns to consider, there are no other residential developments along Club Manor Drive which may create a design juxtaposition between the different use frontages in the area. The current C2 zoning allows the higher density residential by right, so there are no current controls on requiring a mixed use of commercial and residential. This rezoning might create a precedence for rezoning other than PCD tracks. But the, within our, our comprehensive plan within the town center, the C2 zone is, was designed for that. Staff has considered proposing, let's see, I'm sorry. Staff believes the townhomes would work within the interior of the lot, butting the single family and residential uses could provide some benefit to development in the area. From a land use standpoint, the current land use being institutional does not necessarily work with commercial, so staff does recommend a due pass recommendation to the Maumell City Council to amend the master land use plan for the subject property from institutional to commercial for this item, because it does fit within criteria in the area.
I have any other, any questions?
Yeah, I do have one question. When, when did we approve this original village subdivision? Was that in 2020?
No, sir. I believe it was 2018, if I'm not mistaken.
It was 2018, so.
Yes.
And that's when we approved PCD for this out parcel number one, is that correct?
That's correct. And, and I will say that Carnahan Village, which although approved in 2018, is almost fully built out, so they've been selling those pretty quick. It's a pretty good development. And of course, the owner's applicant is here, Holloway Engineering.
If I may, Eric Holloway, 116 Timberland Trail. Just to answer that question, Commissioner Fisher, the, it was PCD for many years before that, so it wasn't actually approved as PCD at that time.
Right.
So we just did not.
It, it just remained.
It just remained. All we did was rezone the, the part that we developed residentially.
Okay, so PCD is what it always was.
It's always been, and been marketed, you know, as PCD and would divide, subdivide for years without any interest.
My apologies. The Carnahan Village portion, the single family, was rezoned to PRD. This portion was left PCD.
Okay.
Thanks for the clarification.
That's why I couldn't remember.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, the only comment that I would make is that changing this to C2, I think would change the entire look of what Club Manor is all about. It wasn't meant originally to have residential sitting on that out parcel, so I've got a problem with changing it at this point.
So the first item we're looking at is changing from institutional to commercial?
I'm jumping the gun.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, you're okay. So it's just the land use, and then we'll get to the zoning?
And I will say that the land use of commercial works both in PCD and C2.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions about changing the land use from institutional to commercial?
Does it stay with us?
Due pass. No, this is a due pass, City Council.
Mr. Vice Chair, make a motion for due pass recommendation to request to amend the Maumell Master Land Use Plan property located 1601 Club Manor from institutional to commercial, pending other further staff or commissioner comments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes on to the City Council? Item three.
Item, item three, Mr. Vice Chair's request to amend the Maumell zoning map for property located at 1601 Club Manor Drive from PCD planned commercial development to C2 Town Center. Some of my comments from the previous item touched on the C2 zoning. The, both PCD and C2 were designed for the town center area, so the C2 is appropriate and reasonable request. The, the difference between the C2 and the PCD is that PCD does not allow for residential components. The C2 does allow for R3 residential by right, which is, again, between 16 to 34 units per acre. The applicant has indicated that his interest is to construct townhomes on the site. And as mentioned before within our review, from a staff standpoint, we do feel that the townhome development could create opportunity for extended development within the commercial area, providing spendable disposable income of the residents that live there in the local market as well as spuring additional commercial development. Because the C2 component is part of the town center design on the master comprehensive plan, staff recommends a due pass recommendation to the Maumell City Council to amend, to amend the master zoning map for the subject property from PCD to C2 Town Center Commercial.
Comments?
Well, as I indicated before, when I jumped the gun, I do have a bit of a problem. All the properties on Club Manor, both sides, east and west, from Millwood all the way to O Sage, has been developed as offices, restaurants, and I think changing this is not appropriate at this time.
State your name and address, please.
Darrell Brock, 18 South Shore, Conwell, Arkansas. We've had the property for sale since 18, and it was praised for $750,000. I had it on the market for $550,000. And we've had zero interest in the property, or the restaurant, or anything. Nobody's even attempted. That's the reason I was going to change it to this, because I don't do commercial building, and I can do residential. And we was going to make it kind of look like row houses, kind of like they done at Hendrick's Village.
Where?
Hendrick's Village. It's kind of a multi-use. They got houses, they got town, townhouse, they call them row houses, and.
But it would all be residential, no commercial at all?
No commercial. It's just an acre and a half.
Yeah.
Probably be 20 units somewhere in that neighborhood. Like I say, we've had it under market value since 18, and zero interest.
Any other questions, comments?
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a due pass to amend the Maumell zoning map for property located at 1601 Club Manor from PCD to C2. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed?
No.
Is that enough for a? Okay, the motion. Do what?
You vote.
Yeah, the, the motion carries. Next item.
All righty. The next, the next two items on the agenda are, one, a request for approval of a preliminary plat for Harris addition, and the other one is a request for approval of a preliminary development plan for Harris addition. Mr. Vice Chair, when we, when we numbered these, we did place the plat before the development plan. Of course, the, the plat cannot be approved without the development plan, but if you approve the plat and not the development plan, it still affects it. However you wish to continue, we can continue with the plat first or the development plan first?
We can take the plat.
Okay. So, a checklist was handed out on your, and I apologize, it came in after. And it's, it's labeled Harrison Plant, Preliminary Plat Checklist. Staff comments on this, let me get to it real quick. Property is located between Maumell Boulevard and Commercial Park Drive. The property has been recently rezoned, approved through ordinance 1026 this past Monday, April 19th, to PRD. The Planning Commission recently had moved this through as a due pass recommendation on the, on the rezoning to PRD. The applicant is now moving forward with a preliminary development plan and a plat. They're proposing a mix of use with some single-family and multifamily elements. The single-family elements are senior living type, the, the multifamily are quadplex townhomes lining Commercial Park Drive, which you'll be able to see within the development plan. They have it split out in blocks, lot one block one, lot one block two, and then the individual lots, which would be individually platted for the single-family developments. The staff comments are some just minor adjustments on the plat that need to be made, which are more true course distances. The, one of the main items that came up later on in the review was the right of way for Commercial Park Drive. We did identify that Commercial Park Drive is only partially dedicated to the city of Maumell. That's something that needs to be further discussed with, with administration. But we're, we would request that the Commercial Park Drive remaining area be added in on the preliminary plat to be dedicated with this. It's not shown as it is, so that's one of the items that we would look at. And we can do that prior to the final plating. Source of title needs to be updated, and then building setbacks within the property. Otherwise, staff comments have been met, and staff recommendation is approval of the preliminary plat contingent upon meeting staff, commissioner, and engineering comments. Now keep in mind, the plat stays with the Planning Commission. The development plan actually is a due pass recommendation to City Council, and we'll move on to City Council.
And the 11 by 17 is a more recent copy?
Yes, sir. The, what you're seeing on your screens and what was handed out to you on the ledger size is the most updated. We went through some, some changes throughout the process. One of the items of concern was, was the access road. Let me just pull into it here. Was the access road that wraps around. This was previously a fire access that they had pointed out, but now the applicant has indicated that they wish to sprinkle everything, so there's no need for the fire access. They're seeing this as being more of a pull around for the sanitation trucks whenever they move through the single-family development for pickup.
Is that within the landscape buffer?
So that is within the landscape buffer. They have, one of the requirements on the development plan will be contingent upon approved site plan review and approval. The site plan actually would require a landscape plan as well as elevation plan and other things that come along with commercial development on the multifamily. So they do have, you'll see on, on the updated development plan that they have landscaping replaced within that buffer area.
Mr. Chair, we don't see too just a ton of these. Is there a reason, and there has to be, why we don't dimension the lots within the development when submitted like this for preliminary plat, such as every lot and all subdivisions are dimensioned?
And the applicant's representative is here to answer that question.
Yes, correct. Mark Rutter, Holloway Engineering. Yes, they are, but they were just left off. But we would absolutely dimension all, everything.
That's a comment perhaps. Did that, you said it's all satisfied, so that should be a comment, right?
So, yes, sir, they, the actual, the. I've got, let's see, building setback lines with dimension, dimensions are needed.
Good, okay.
Number 13.
I didn't get the latest one. I don't know, it's probably buried here somewhere.
Yeah, you got it like we're up before.
Yeah, right before, I thought, we, we were working on this all the way up to this week, so we were, we were scrambling to try to get out an updated checklist. I apologize, but it was late in front of you, there's a checklist for the, for the preliminary plat.
Okay, I'll believe you.
Obviously, they'll be included on the final plat.
The, the lot sizes are actually above 4,000 square feet, so they're considered single-family small lot design. He has in there five-foot setbacks on both sides, which provides 10 feet between, between the houses, which you find common on the small lot subdivisions.
So zero lot line on the side yards? They're not showing on my drawing, I'm just asking. Do you have side yards shown here too, or no? Zero, it's zero lot line for side yards?
It's not zero lot line on the side yards, no, sir.
No.
What is it?
It's five feet on the side yards.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And that should have been indicated on the plat. You will see on the development plan, the updated, the, a little bit more detail.
I do need some clarification, and that's on Commercial Park Drive. Am I to understand that what we're doing is reducing the size of that street?
No, sir. Not at this time. Now, they did propose...
What is the gray area going into the street?
That's on the other development plan, like I think.
No, it's on the plat, the sidewalk.
That's a sidewalk, but it's not in the street. It's actually in the right-of-way. Is that correct, Mark?
That is correct, and what... We were proposing parallel parking, but... And that will be under discretion of the city engineer. But you'll see in the development plan, we took it off of the curb section per Roy's comments.
There are too many questions on the parallel parking, and really needs to be studied by the city engineer as to where that would be. But planning, we reviewed that. But to your comments on the side, there are sidewalks on Commercial Park Drive that does wrap around, and they are providing an asphalt pathway along Maumell Boulevard, you'll notice along the green space, and we have requested connections to that pathway from inside the plan, which they've indicated on there as well, so that you have internal connections to those pedestrian pathways.
Okay, so, make sure that I'm clear, that strip that goes along there, that is existing sidewalks or to-be-built sidewalks?
Yes, new sidewalks.
That does not encroach on the existing street?
No, sir, it's in the right-of-way, and being on the plat, it requires the sidewalks to be built along with the development.
Well, what was throwing me off is you come on down to Commerce, and that street kind of jogs in.
It's not shown at all where that bank side is.
Yeah, the detail's not shown of where that curb cut is. They don't have it on there, and they do have sidewalks all the same, so that I would suggest that we add that as a comment to differentiate between existing sidewalk and proposed sidewalk.
That would be fine. And just for your information on the thought process there, we kind of jog over to the back of the existing curb with the sidewalk, because if there were parallel parking, it would make more sense to have the sidewalk next to the curb. But if we don't go parallel parking, we'll have the sidewalk at the right-of-way line like usual.
And being a preliminary plat, typically whenever you have the civil design happen, some of these things tend to modify as we get in and start actually getting involved in the civil design.
And this stays with planning?
This does stay with Planning Commission, yes, sir. All the streets on the inside are private streets. They're not public streets, so there's no dedication, and the sanitation servicing will be commercially done, not by the city of Maumell.
And you made a comment that it's sprinkled, but do we still not have to have fire truck access?
They... So, when you sprinkle, according to the fire marshal, it changes all the requirements of fire trucks, so the length of the streets are different. It pretty much throws everything out, because the sprinkling manages the process. But the turnaround, the asphalt paved utility access that they're proposing on the outside could be utilized.
It's 27 wide.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, but the dead end for Appendix D.
Yeah, that won't work, correct?
They actually indicated... The chief actually indicated that they didn't like the grass creep.
Right.
Yeah, so... And they're looking for a subdivision to go sprinkled.
Okay, mention the 27, what's before us here is what's going on, so that, to your point, Roy, is that that goes... That access goes around. That was required from our chief.
Well, it's not actually... It's not required, because now that they're sprinkling, there's not...
So, it's coming off?
Well, no, it's there. I was told that it was... They wanted to leave it for sanitation access.
Well, and other things. Obviously, residents can use it, and it's very similar to a loop street, but...
Okay. But can it be in the landscape buffer?
I guess the question is, is coverage adequate, Mark?
Well, there again, the landscape buffer was all about separation from the street, from the industrial area. So, we feel with the addition of the landscape trees that we're going to provide, just essentially replacing the scrub pines and things that are there right now, that'll be a much better look.
Now, all of the units that are on this are going to be sprinkled, everyone?
The residential units, yes.
Okay, which ones aren't residential units?
The townhomes. I'm sorry, the single-family. Yeah, the townhomes would not be sprinkled.
Okay, on this one, which ones aren't being sprinkled?
Well, you'll probably be able to see it better on the development plan.
Well, this and that are the townhomes, and so all of the...
That's what I'm saying. All of this on this preliminary are all sprinkled.
Would it state that on the final plat? That each lot, each one of those lots has to be sprinkled?
So, that more than likely would be on the development plan. We can put it on the plat if you wish to have that on the general notes, that all the lots, the specific lots in the single-family, 3 through 41, would be sprinkled.
Isn't that the only way it would actually be?
Required.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Well, the development plan is actually filed with the plat, so it becomes part of the legal document.
Okay. Then you don't need to state it twice. Any other questions?
So, let me ask this this way, make sure. So, the current zone... Remind me now, we zoned to and from. What's the current zoning?
Current zoning was approved this past... It was C3. It was rezoned to PRD this past Monday.
So, in the PRD, is there a coverage requirement for the landscape area within the development?
The coverage requirement for the land... Well, green space is 7%.
So, he'll have to meet that. Maybe not. It looks valid.
The...
That's why I asked. Did you not write the number on that, Mark, to see if you can get it?
He did. The green space coverage area is notated on the... It may be on the development plan.
It is, development plan.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion, if it's okay with you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Harris addition, pending any other commissioner or staff comments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Now to the development plan.
So, now I know why Mr. Neri may have shown the same detail on the plat as the development plan.
Well, we've been programmed a different way, so give us a little grace, okay?
Wish my comment to moving the development plan first and then the plat second.
I think your comment is good, and what you want to do is good, but we've just kind of been trained up another way, so that's why you're wrong.
So, I apologize for the confusion.
I don't think... It just takes us a little bit of adjustment.
Yes, sir.
I understand what you want to do, but why you do, get that.
Okay. Again, a checklist for the final plat... I'm sorry, the development plan was provided to you. We were working on that up until today as well. And I commend Mark. He's been really good in working with us with a lot of changes that have come in. And you're provided with a ledger copy, all of you, so the copy in your packet is no longer... You can probably see the ledger copy and see the difference between it and the one that you have and the modifications that were made. So, this is the development plan. This is actually... Will go to City Council for a resolution of approval, so your motion is a due pass recommendation to City Council. Staff's recommendation is a due pass contingent upon meeting staff, commissioner, and engineering comments. The items that are... On the checklist, you've got, again, the right-of-way for Commercial Park Drive, adding that in as the dedication for that, and the source title setbacks when you... And then, this plan, keep in mind, from a development standpoint, requires site plan review because of the multifamily that is around the Commercial Park area. The site plan review does require landscape plan, lighting plan, and elevations of the proposed commercial multifamily, not the single-family, but the multifamily. So, that will come back to Planning Commission. So, this is contingent upon that, but if approved, then all they need to meet is the requirements of that site plan review within the ordinance. The developers proposing single-family housing, small lot design within the interior and multifamily quadplex, you say three-story or two-story, Mark?
Three.
Three-story. And we have that... Those were additions that we have in... I believe we added those in the comments. He did do verifications on the green space, and he does comply with the amount of green space in the project. We did ask him to add additional landscape buffering around the area bordering Maumell Boulevard. Of course, when the landscape plan and the site plan comes in for review, there may be more requirements that we look at there, as this is more of a 10,000-foot view of what you're seeing. And then you've got your detention to the south. Overall, the applicant, they started out all single-family, and they have modified this to meet the request of our department, looking at transecting from single-family to the commercial, so that you had something that kind of bordered in between. Originally, what was C3 and still is C3 across the street on Commercial Park Drive, but that is currently in... At City Council, you've approved a rezoning of that from C3 to C2 to downgrade that. But the Commercial Park Drive, again, is 45 feet wide with a current, looks like right-of-way on the north of 80 feet and on the south of 75 feet. So, one of the things we're asking is that, again, that dedication that continues that. They've added in since this came to you. Let me just show you a few things. We've got dumpster locations that were placed. We had to work through those to locate those appropriately, since this will be commercially served. We've got several in there that have been placed in.
So, question real quick. So, even the residential or even the single-family will be served by dumpsters?
Well, that's kind of a question up for grabs. It's going to be up to the Waste Collection Agency to tell us what they think. I personally wouldn't want to take my dumps... Trash to a dumpster if I was in the single-family, but we'll see. I mean, it could be either.
It's being planned, though, for single-family pickup. That's one of the reasons for the asphalt paved utility. Without that pickup, I don't even know if that paved drive would be necessary. Because even though these streets... The streets are over 300 feet long, the fire chief has mentioned that that falls out because of the sprinkling. Now, the other question is, with emergency ambulatory and all that, you still need some turnaround, whether if it's a cul-de-sac or a pathway, so that's why we've left the asphalt road for that.
I'm going to ask that you verify the Appendix D still applies even if it's sprinkled for fire truck access. Sprinkling doesn't take out Appendix D requirements, length of road, and turnarounds? I just ask that it be verified.
No, we will.
In my meeting with them, they acted like that it did.
Okay.
And if so, we'll go back to the grass creep to the Boulevard.
Okay. Well, in the asphalt road, if it stays in there, it should meet that purpose. Because if you've got people parking on either side of the street and an ambulance goes down there, there's no way to turn around.
Right.
Yeah, if I may, Mark met with the fire chief, and he did approve this plan as it is, and I think they have the authority to overstep those requirements, so long as the local authority does agree to it.
And that's SPA 99. Can we take off the parallel parking note that got left?
It is off on there, except for the straight section.
Look at the top.
Yep, I got you. Yep.
Oh, the note, I'm sorry.
Take the note off.
I get it last minute.
So, is this... I'm sorry. The parallel parking that's shown on the southeast side of the development, that's kind of just subject up to review?
That's about the city engineer, yes.
Yeah, we're not considering the parallel parking in this. This is more just lines on a page right now. The... Again, this is all contingent upon the site plan review, and in that site plan review, we'll get into the weeds of where parallel parking would be appropriate and whether or not, if that's something that the city would want on Commercial Park Drive.
If we go to three-story, do we have enough parking on site now?
So, the current parking requirements, we did the numbers on it. They do meet, and those are listed. The townhome parkings, they've got 127 spaces and 10 ADA, and by quantity, 137 is the minimum requirements, based on our calculations. And then all the single-family will be self-contained parking.
Right, right, right. I didn't know if the last minute changed, made a difference, two-story to three-story?
No, sir. One thing to note, and this was something that the city attorney pointed out to me and asked about, so I certainly want to make note of it, is that the density ratios you'll find on the single-family are 4.8, and the townhome is 16.4. When you look at the guidelines within the PRD section, it says single-family at four and the townhomes up to 12, but those are guidelines, and that's one of the reasons for the PRD is to give some flexibility there, based on the commission flexibility.
That doesn't have to be a specific variance request?
No, not since it's a guideline. I don't see where it would require that. Now, if it was specific zoning within the R1 or R2, then that would... Now, if it was specific zoning within the R1 or R2, then that would.
And if I may, I just might interject on that, that there, the last several PRDs have, have been more, have been as many as five units per acre, so this would be consistent with what we, what we approved before.
And I want to ask you again, why are we doing parking on Commercial Park Drive?
There again, that, that's just for potentially commercial coming across the street. It's wide enough that they're going to do it anyhow, so.
Why, why would people live in Ms. Park there? You got, you got decorative fence going all the way around the perimeter, so what's the access for the commercial drive parking to even be on here?
I, I think, just if I can answer real quick, I, I think I created this problem. You know, in the very beginning, I think Scott and I, we looked at, if we're going to do a more urban design that has these three-story structures that are fairly close to the road, it was, it was an attempt to put, to take in what we believe, or what I believe, is an overbuilt road and create some beautification that would be along this, the same area. It doesn't have to have parallel parking, that was just one idea, where we could, we could change up the look and maybe create, you know, more of a, of a, of a local feel, where we're doing bigger, maybe eight-foot sidewalks along this same, you know, where you'd have parallel parking, but it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily have to be that. So honestly, we should have taken it off a long time ago, so I, I don't want to get into the weeds about that, but maybe somewhere down the line, we'll, we'll come back to the city and discuss what we think that could be, because I do think it would be a good complement to the area, since it looks like it's going to develop it out a different way. But again, that's, that's not part of this current proposal.
Yeah, of course, thing is, what we don't know is what's going to develop across.
Right, so I think, I think we could wait and, and wait and see how that plays out, and then, and then look at that.
Yeah, and because if that juncture, is the road too big now?
Right.
For what it might be later?
Right.
Like, we squeeze it down?
So it's probably better to wait and see how it plays out, especially since you have this activity happening, we may see quick developments up there. So once, once we know what more, what's going on, we'll look back at that. But really, this was all in the very beginning, just an idea of trying to create some streetscape along with this townhome development that would, would add a little bit of beautification, like you might see in some of the, you know, I think Conway has several of these developments, Little Rock has several of them, and where, where they're trying to slow down traffic and, and have more of a walkable community. So there is really the impetus of it all, but, but we certainly are backing, backing up on that idea, and we'll, and we'll, we'll readdress it when those things.
You think of Main Street, Argenta area, that's very nice what they've done down there, and that, that was in my mind what it's similar to.
Fisher, you said fence, is it intended to be a fence along that property line?
Says note three on there, general notes, perimeter property boundary to be decorative fenced. So I would mean that to believe the whole perimeter of this property is going to have a direct, direct decorative fence around it.
Ron speak to that, originally.
At what time is that worth saying there? Ron Harris, 63, Onance, Houthland Drive, and Silver Rock, Arkansas. I don't think we're talking about the same kind of, we're going to let the perimeter be the, so this is kind of what we're talking about. So it's not like a six-foot, you know, privacy thing with rock or brick or what you normally would see in Conway or something like that, we're trying to do something a little more decorative.
We should probably.
Lower, almost like a picket fence.
Not a barrier top of.
Yeah.
We should probably take that note off if we do anything, because that was from when it was all residential. It was all going to be single-family, and that made sense then, it maybe doesn't make as much sense now.
So we'll, can we add that as a, as a commissioner request, have that number, that item removed from the?
I mean, we like the idea of maybe access being controlled, but yeah, not to be a wood fence that.
No.
Like we have other places.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, I, you know, again, I would think from the privacy and security, you're targeting seniors, fencing around the perimeter would be a good idea.
Yeah.
So I have no problem with that, I'm just, you know, making sure that when I read that note, that that's exactly what you were talking about. Putting in some sort of a fencing around the entire property.
Yeah.
Now, what Mr. Harris just showed, that's not very much secure for next development, so.
And we'll, we'll probably get more into that during the site plan review with the elevations. They did provide those as, as suggested elevations, but they weren't, they weren't with this specific plan, so, and then also, we did ask for connectivity to that perimeter sidewalk, so you'll see that there are sidewalks that connect out to the outside, so it's not fully closed out. We do want to promote pedestrian circulation.
Any other questions? And, and because we're not looking, Scott, what you said earlier, because we're not looking at landscape and the other items, the elevations, this needs to be contingent upon meeting city staff, engineering, and planning comments?
Uh, yes, sir.
Our requirements, okay.
And site plan review.
Do I have a motion for a due pass?
Make a motion for a, a due pass for the preliminary development plan for Harris addition.
Thank you. And that's contingent upon meeting city staff.
Staff and commission comments.
Have a motion in a second, any other questions? All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, item six is a request for approval of a preliminary plat for pinnacle height subdivision. The commissioners were provided the plat in your packet, as well as the checklist. Nothing has changed since you've received that, so that, that is an accurate depiction. This, this parcel of land is located in the northwestern quadrant in the county. This came to planning commission last, last month, and the preliminary plat was denied. And I'll go through some, the, the items for the denial, which the, the applicant has fully, has addressed all seven items, and has made the modifications to the plat. Put it up here for you. The, and I'll, I'll read, we did receive one public comment in, and I'll read that for the record. "I wanted to share some concerns regarding the 80-acre lot for sale at 1101 Trax Road," and this is from a Mr. DeKlan Olefsky, and he's, and he's located at 138 Breckenridge Lane. "This lot is being sold for residential development and would presumably require annexation from Mammell. I live close by in Mammell Valley Estates and have a lot of familiarity with this land. I'm concerned that this land couldn't handle the development process." On the map, he attached slope terrains and stormwater concerns. This leads to my main concern, I'm very worried about pollution from process of adding utility roads and homes. He mentioned concerns over stormwater, as well as according to Realtor listings of this land and costs. So I responded to him and, and addressed his concerns that he, that he mentioned, and he was appreciative of that. So, so last month, the preliminary plat was denied, the right-of-way for Settlement Road extending to the subject property could not be confirmed upon request. That was one of the main concerns by the planning commission. The applicant, which is Holloway, applicant's representative Holloway Engineering, has secured authorization for the easement access to Settlement Road. They could, they could not confirm that right-of-way actually came all the way up to the property line, but the adjacent property owner, the Bradleys, have, have agreed to sign that access easement. But the, you'll note on the plat notes, and I'll pull into that, number, number 13. So, of the Arcs of Fire Code, one or two-family dwelling, residential developments of one or two-family dwellings where the number of dwelling units exceed 30 shall be provided with two separate and approved fire apparatus access roads and shall meet the requirements. If secondary access is not provided, buildings will be sprinkled. So the first phase that they have within this development would not exceed the 30, but if they go into the second phase, which is where they go across to Settlement Road and would connect the, if for any reason there's an issue with that easement, they have agreed and placed on the, the preliminary plat and will be on the final plat that all houses will be sprinkled, which would do away with the need for the secondary access. The county has, their comments came in, they've, the county, the only comments from the county would be that a Knox box and a gate be placed on the Settlement Road in the county side by the applicant, which in the notes, they've, they agreed to do that. The county does not want construction traffic or main ingress egress through Settlement Road because it is not an improved road and could not handle the traffic. So that's, but number one was, was ver, was met both by willingness to sprinkle, but also for gaining the access easement needed to connect to Settlement Road. Number two, a gate on the proposed connection to Settlement Road does not meet the requirements of the master street plan, which shows the street as a public collector's street. Again, this development only goes to the boundary, and I'll get into the annexation process here momentarily, but the gate in the county would be such that until that future time when, if it develops out further out to the west and Settlement Road is improved, then that access would continue on as it is here. Comments from Plast County Fire Department on how they would service this area were not available, and an agreement for mutual aid between the city and county could not, could be needed. The, the applicant has agreed to annex into the city, so there would not be need for mutual aid, and I'll again describe how that process was, was agreed upon and lined out here momentarily. There was confusion over the timing of the developer's intention to annex and the impacts this would have on approval and dedication of public versus private infrastructure. So the challenge of being in the city, being under the review jurisdiction of, of our subdivision ordinance, but the concerns over how the public streets would be built, dedicated, if annexed in, is that the, we came and discussed, and the, the applicant has agreed to this, and it's notated in the notes, that, let me pull to that real quick. So, item number 14, civil plans to be reviewed, approved, and inspected by City of Mammell's Civil Plan Final Approval and Authorization to Proceed with Infrastructure Improvements will be contingent upon approved release from the county and annexation into the City of Mammell. So the agreement was that with the approval of the preliminary plat, that gives the applicant the necessary entitlement to move forward with his contract to close on the property. Upon closing that, then they would move the process forward with annexation, and that annexation would need to happen before the civil plans are approved. They can still do the civil plans and submit them for review, because that, again, takes a little time, and during that process, the city would work with them and the county in order to move that annexation forward. Denial of the annexation will require the applicant to resubmit any application to both the city and the county prior to proceeding. This review process was undertaken mainly by the city, the county has not done a full review, and if annexation does not happen, then the county's going to want to re-review this through the preliminary process and make sure that the civil plans meet the requirements with streets and drainage, the county requirements. And then there are further mentioning of, these are the other comments from the county, Settlement Road, will no time be used for the construction access, and then the, the gate and Knox box. So both the city, the applicant, and the county feel that this is, this is a good scenario. It allows the developer to move forward with the preliminary process, but it also grants the city the ability to review this and, and move it forward through our review process to make sure they're meeting our requirements. Once that annexation happens, that would happen before any infrastructure's put in place, so then at that point, the developer would not be at risk, he would be in the city, and then we would follow all inspection processes. So staff, all comments, let me. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat contingent upon meeting all staff engineer, commissioner comments, and annexation into the City of Mammell prior to approval of the, the civil plan.
Do we ever come to conclusion about where the right-of-way at Settlement concluded or ended? Does it, does it run, does it adjoin to the boundary of, of property on the west side?
So the applicant's representative Holloway Engineering is here, they can probably address that?
I'll restate my name, Eric Callaway, 116 Templeland Trail. I looked into that issue, I looked back at the old county map during the MACU order, you can see that, it, it looks to me like it actually makes it to the property, but since we were not sure, we went ahead and made an agreement with the neighboring landowner, the Bradleys, to go back 1,300 feet across his property to obtain access to the north as far as he could go, so I think we're, we're well beyond what the MACU order would allow for. The county has been maintaining, well, passed all the way down to his, where his barn is, which is about halfway through his property, but we're going all the way across his property with a, with an access easement.
So that access easement will have to be in place on phase, that's what I was saying, so phase, is phase, when, when does that trigger, phase two?
So, right, so they would, they would extend the, the Ridgeland Road on out to the boundary on the second phase and would, would make that connection to the easement. Again, if for any reason that they fail to make that connection, they've agreed to sprinkle all the houses that exceed the 30, the, the 30 limit without sprinkling. And the, the fire marshal has approved that and accepted it.
And that's not so much about needing to, that's really more about not wanting to build the access all the way through, we may decide to sprinkle the buildings, just, just to not have to build that, that full access.
Or change a lot, or change phases.
Right, so we, we will, we'll see how that plays out, but that's, we already have the access now, and we're, we're at a point where he's ready to sign it, so.
Has the fire chief indicated, I know they went out there and drove it, have they indicated to you that that access up to the property line where Settlement Road currently concludes would require improvements? I know you need an access easement, but would require improvements?
I was told not, and I believe staff. I was told not, and I believe staff, city staff was also told not, that they went, drove out there and were satisfied with settlement road.
And the other, the other item, the number seven, proposed access via Trax Road does not appear to be able to handle emergency responding vehicles if needed, and that came up. So they met, they met the engineer's request to remove the extended cul-de-sac which ran up to the north. They removed that off and made that a future track to be developed so that the cul-de-sac fits within the, the ordinance. But if they extend that, they will have to have access and improvements via Trax Road to meet the, the secondary, if not sprinkled.
We, we have no master street plan in that area up there, correct? Everything that we have is just through settlement road. So that, that extension and access is specifically gonna meet code on emergency for fire truck, correct?
I do believe you do have.
Is it one only?
An extension off of the Diamond Park Drive, as the, you know, the old Ken Norman development that came through. I think that is on the master street plan all the way back to settlement road, which would be right where this, we, we cut that off. So we may, we may have.
So maybe we should look at that, see, or put some thought into that if we need a change.
Well, and they've, they've added the additional space in here for future connections.
That's it. I don't know what it's connected to.
Right, and there's really.
What, was, looking at the master street plan is the reason we put that there, and, and it would be natural that we would move, possibly, if we're successful with this development, we'd move further to the east and work towards that property and maybe that connection to the city.
And there is, yeah, there is only really one other viable connection up in Diamond Park that we, that we can make, so. So they have that as a future plan, and as far as on the master street plan, we'll look on it and see if we need to make any additional.
Understanding the hurdles that that would have, but we'll, we'll get there, hopefully.
Just for a point of clarification, this, which staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat as mentioned, this stays with the commission. This does not go to the city council.
Any other questions? And we would make a motion contingent upon meeting city staff, county staff, engineering and planning commission requirements?
Yes, sir.
Chairman, I would make that motion to approve the preliminary plat of Pinnacle Heights subdivision, subject to everything you just said.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Any opposed? Passes. We'll close the public hearing at 7:50. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Eric. City Council Liaisonal Court, Gerstner's not here. So we'll go to April 19th.
Well, the city has the video up, but it's the wrong date. It's the wrong meeting for April 19th, so I don't know.
Okay.
It's the April 19th meeting, April 19th meeting is the April 5th video.
We should've tended.
So then, I have May 3rd.
I have 17th.
What? And Craig has 17th. Motion, Eric.
Second.
Second.
A motion and second, all in favor?
Yes.